All right, we're back for the tax increment financing study and formulating group. Our meeting on March 8th, 1 o'clock, and there isn't really an agenda other than us working on what our report is going to look like. That said, I think since our last meeting, maybe three sets of minutes have gone up online. And so, I know you all have read them. If anybody wants to make a motion to accept those minutes.
I'm moved, approved.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all the minutes are approved. So, we're officially caught up with the exception of the public hearing two days ago, and those minutes are just going to reflect a link to the video because that's going to be the best description of what happened. I don't know that we could summarize the hour worth of comments that easily. All right, so that leaves us, before today, I was going to try to take the, what was a list of ideas and come up with some sort of outline of a report for us to discuss, and I've failed to really get to the finish line on that. Day job and the other day job have gotten in the way. So, I took what we looked at last time and added the ideas that we discussed at our last meeting, and also things we heard from the public a couple of days ago. And I do think last time we got so far as, I think what Paulette described at the end, which is listed toward the, on the last, on page four of this, Part 13 about possible report structure. She suggested a description of what is TIF, some description of current status in Nashville, a description of where projects are located, and then we talked, I think at length last time, about having our recommendations split up into short-term ones that are accomplishable right away, and long-term ones where we would want to make recommendations for what agency or agencies should address the suggestion. And we also talked about having a frequently asked questions or common myths section. And I think we all feel that on the short-term and long-term list is increasing public awareness, public education about what TIF is. And so, that is how far I got since we talked last, and I know that leaves us a little free form, but somehow we need to, I think today, have some concrete ideas about who's going to draft what, and what we're going to have in a short-term bucket and what we're going to have in a long-term bucket. Anybody with genius ideas is, now's your time.
Can I make just a gentle comment about what I heard in that meeting on Wednesday night? To me, it was a really interesting thing where people said, "If it wasn't for TIF, we'd have more money for schools. If it wasn't for TIF, we'd have more money for affordable housing." It was, it's as if there is a bucket of money that is sitting at MDHA or down at the courthouse that is just TIF money that gets passed to somebody, but for that...
I was totally struck with the same thing, and it's even worse than that. It's like it's sitting in the budget, and NBHA takes it away and gives it to developers, you know, that it was sitting there in the budget before. I called it the zero-sum game analysis. It's like, you know, there's only so much money in the bucket, and if we're doing TIF correctly, we're doing it to stimulate economic development, and so you spend...
It's an add too.
Yeah, I mean, what was the number of targets that you had of extra money that came in a year we didn't have a tax increase?
Oh, that was over $100 million.
$120 million, two years ago.
Yeah, so I mean...
And to me, if we start with this, if we start with a supposition that it's taken away, or should have gone for this, or should have, you know, then we're just talking about two completely different issues.
That's why I think it's important to have this kind of myth section, you know, common myths about what people...
What TIF is and what it's not.
And what it is and what it's not.
And I was struck, not surprisingly, but, and I know a lot more today than I knew in October, right, but I still was struck by just the, there's a lot of misinformation about it. And I think, you know, to the extent that we can develop some consensus around a couple of themes, you know, it seemed like one of those kind of threshold issues is, is TIF a good tool for the city to use, putting aside where and when and how much, but if it's a good tool, and we agree that it can be a good thing when used appropriately and responsibly, then that begins to drive some consensus on some other things. If we don't have consensus around that, then it makes all that harder. I'm not suggesting we take a vote on it or anything, but I think we've all heard different pieces of this that I think were surprising to everybody, and, you know, and if we agree that it's a good tool, but needs a more diverse application geographically and otherwise, then in some respects, we ought to make it easier to access, not harder to access, if that makes sense.
I don't think it should be removed from our toolbox because it's a valuable way to incent, you know, community kind of growth and enhancement, and it does have the city. I mean, in the long term, when you think about it.
Richard, are you going to say something?
No.
Well, I will. You know, so I agree, and the thing that jumps out at me about that is the transparency issue and the...
Equity.
Equity issue. You know, the, there's two things, I think, like, that are short-term driving, that TIF cuts into schools, TIF cuts into affordable housing, that are really not systemic to TIF, but they're driving the conversation. One is the tax rate has got a squeeze on the metro budget, and so, you know, when you reduce the amount of water in the pool, you see more cracks, and there's, and there's some of that going on. And then, the other thing is just that mechanics, the financial reporting mechanics that shows a debit out of the school's budget every year.
In some respect, it's a matter of transparency because people see that number, and they react to that number, but they don't really understand the drivers...
Right.
Yeah, Councilman Cooper said to me, when you're having budget hearings, whatever the second line item is where the TIF money is, seven, 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 something, he said, people are coming from saying, "This money right here, you know, you take this money and use it for my project."
Exactly.
Is there a way to show that differently?
I'm not suggesting less transparency.
There is a way, and that's been done like that since I joined Metro back in 2000, and apparently it was not always budgeted like that.
Right.
It was in a different kind of pot, and it didn't run through schools so that you could see it and what have you. And there was some discussion about signing those across the general funds and displaying that for transparency's sake, probably.
Yeah.
But there's nothing to say it has to be there.
Mechanically, if the money got debited from all the tax revenue before it went out to the six funds...
You'd never see it.
Right, and...
And then someone would say, "You never see it."
Right, so the line item would be gone out of the school's budget, but it only, it shows up in the school's budget and not, say, the police budget or anybody else's budget because the schools have a fund, they're one of the six funds, and so it's, the general fund has a debit, all the funds have a debit, but it stands out more with schools. I mean, I would, like, making it less visible on the financials generally by just taking it off the top of the revenue, I think would be, it would solve the immediate problem of people wouldn't see it in the school's budget.
But...
But that's not adding transparency. I mean, to me, I think the goal would be if you add transparency across the board so there's context for that line item, is, and maybe there could still be a different way to show it.
Could we rename it?
Because there are a lot of council members who I think understand the budget, spend a lot of time with it, but just don't have a basic understanding of what we're talking about.
Right, I think, I think our study group has perhaps doubled the number of human beings in the county that, you know, what we're talking about.
And the six people that are watching, you know.
Right.
I know more about this than they do.
And it's hard to explain.
I had never read the IDB or the TOD statute until this committee, you know, I mean, I knew the MDHA statute.
All right.
Well, I just think that somehow, we've got to start with the premise, and that premise is either tax increment financing is a tool that needs, is positive, but needs greater transparency, greater equity, greater, I mean, all of those other sort of things. But if, if we start with, TIF is taking money away from schools, then you're just going to end up with a completely different outcome.
Well, we don't have to have a vote about it, but I feel pretty confident that the six of us and Paulette, if she were here, would agree with the idea that it is a tool that has value, but I think across the board, all of us would agree, more transparency, more education, more equity, more sunshine, more metrics, more goals.
And that may manifest itself just in some type of an annual report on TIF and the city, and including all of those things that you just said.
Yeah.
And create the content of what that might include.
I think, the thing that's been on my mind a lot is some Michael Kenner's comments about pilots and IDB and the way Chattanooga does it, and like, we've done a lot of studying, but I don't think any of us really knows how Chattanooga does it. And if it really is, they're not using redevelopment districts, they really are using IDB-TIF. He describes it that the mayor's office is the first stop there. So, a thing that's been on my mind is, in Nashville, at various times, there's been one IDB-TIF that we know about, there's a bunch of MDHA-TIFs, there's some MDHA pilots, there's some IDB pilots, and now participation agreements, there's more of. I don't know if there's more or not, it feels to me like there's more, and those are all, I think they all have got sort of a different playbook about how you get them, and I've started to feel like if I was parachuting in to start this from scratch, that I would want for that, that batch of things I just mentioned, that the, that the city would have figured out goals, the city would figure out some amount of money that it wanted to invest in those things, and there'd be one front door, and then the mechanisms of the city would figure out, you know, which of those five that I just mentioned, maybe there's more, is the right tool for the job, and then that would certainly be, lend more clarity.
Because if you go to the IDB and look at all the different things that run through there, whether it's schools, hospitals, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff that goes through there, to be able to issue industrial development bonds that are then tax exempt because they go through the IDB, and that number is enormous.
Yeah.
They would, I think they are, they are mostly tax-exempt entities, so...
And all those are non-recourse to Metro?
Yep.
Unless they fail to...
I mean, most of that's condo debt, just like the...
Yeah, they don't have revenue bonds, you're revenue in hospitals.
Well, and to me, that's the borderline, like the Health and Facilities, Health Education Facilities Board, that Metro would never, ever, ever have any liability for. Like, I'm not, I'm not necessarily thinking that that should be part of what we're trying to capture, but where there's Metro money in former property taxes, or foregone property taxes, or actually spending on participation agreements, that's what has started striking me, that one, one front door for dealing with that.
So, for me, I mean, we are, we are debating the use of tools at kind of a program level or an application of tools, right? I mean, if you're going to swoop in and start this from scratch, I mean, isn't, isn't sort of the root cause, or at least part of it here, lack of some kind of overarching economic development strategy? Because we're talking about application of tools, and that's a, that's a how question, and we're getting caught up in arguing how, right? But, I mean, does the city really have any kind of economic development strategy where we're describing what it is we are trying to do, or what it is we're trying to achieve by applying these various tools? I mean, and so, it's which door do you go in, it's who's doing what, it's how we're applying, is it too much or is it not enough?
Yeah.
But I don't know that we've ever really looked at it from that lens, or maybe you did just before, and this is the function of me being here for only two years, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, I mean, my sense, I'm curious what you think, is that, that for multiple administrations going back a long time, that strategy has been, you know, in-house at the mayor's office.
And it's term limited.
And it's term limited, and it may or may not be publicly known.
And there are a couple of other things. One of it's market-driven, so, you know, for decades, nobody would build any kind of residential downtown. City wanted residential downtown, they incentivized residential downtown.
And that was clearly publicized, and everybody knew that the city was doing that, and that was being promoted and so forth. And there are a lot of, I mean, a lot of these big projects, I mean, obviously, the baseball stadium, the Ascended Amphitheater, I mean, people understood those were priorities of different administrations, the convention center itself, you know, the bridge over 28th and 31st Avenue, and so, I get some of what you're saying, Bob, about sometimes people know the strategies and that. Usually, it's a mayor says, "I have five things I want to accomplish," and maybe three of them, they say, "I think we could use TIF money on this particular project," you know. And so, it's kind of a mix, and then there's a lot of things that just get done. You know, I think Paulette complained, it was just driven by some developer waking up one day and saying, "I'd like to build this kind of a building over here," and so he goes to the mayor's office or MDHA or somebody, and they say, "Yeah, that kind of fits with sort of what we're trying to do," and so, it doesn't feel like it's part of a comprehensive strategy. I mean, there's kind of an underlying sense of, "We want to promote the city and increase the tax base and make the gulch look better or do something else." And if you come in with an idea that kind of fits in one of those buckets, you're ahead of the game. If it doesn't fit in somebody's bucket, you're probably not going to get very far, you know, I mean, there's...
Let me argue what someone else may say.
Sure.
Which is, you know, we have these community plans, and we have Nashville Next, and we have these, these planning activities that the city has invested significantly in about where we want to go. Where does that fit in?
I'll give you a perfect example.
Yeah, because that'll be that counter argument.
You've got density on the corridors. So, one of the big things about Nashville Next was density on the corridors. The next thing you got was, okay, let's do TOD development, let's get that right, let's create it because we need density on the corridors, following right exactly what...
Following perfectly.
Yeah, and then it just, for whatever reason, you know, I was, I had my hands full when they were doing that TOD, and I'm glad they, I don't know the details of it, but that's a public policy. It's in Nashville Next, change the state legislature to be able to do it.
And you're marching down that path.
And that's what, why we're doing it.
That's when it works, when it ties into those overall community plans.
It's like, we want to bring urban, we want to bring housing downtown. That's an important, I mean, but I think having those goals stated in that...
And having those linkages identified, I think are important.
Which is in part why MDHA, Joe, would say, "It's not like you've got a big file folder of all these applications that were denied because you kind of, you work your way through that process and you get to a point where MDHA says, 'This is something you should apply for and that we think can be approved,' or you ferreted that out along the way because either the numbers don't work, it's not the right project, or it doesn't fall in line with the aspirations of that redevelopment district and the plan that was done, or whatever the current kind of political will is towards it, right? And so, you know, you don't get to a place where it's like, put in an application, you wonder whether or not it's going to get approved or not. Is that fair, Joe? I mean, you have a lot of conversations with a lot of people who end up not applying because it's made clear to them that that doesn't line up.
So, I guess in the context of the, some of the words we're using, you know, we, for the report, we need to think about, are we saying anything about, you know, whether it makes sense to have more broadly stated and formulated economic development goals, or are we sticking to our knitting on TIF and making the program better, or both?
I wouldn't want to reorder Paulette's outline, but thinking about that this morning, it almost seems to me, instead of short-term and long-term recommendations, you almost have recommendations and observations, and recommendations of those things where we've got a lot of consensus on, and that you could impact something on a short-term basis, something that could actually be implemented. Your observations, and maybe we still call them long-term, are those things, maybe we're not all on the same page about, but... And/or that are so long-term that we, we know is not going to be implemented in the very near future, and maybe that's not the right way to look at it, but I was trying to break those out into kind of two buckets.
Things that maybe were not within the original scope of this group's work, but definitely issues.
Like Brian's incentive analysis, I thought was, I could really nerd out on that. I'm not sure what the rest of my people in the development, you know, group would say, but...
Well, and that's, that's part of this reporting question with, you know, our discussion about the line item, the way it's reported in the budget. I mean, we don't, we don't really have a format to tell a complete story about economic development here. And, you know, it's, it's, the way we present it in the budget looks like you're just shifting money out of schools into, you know, something else, and it doesn't really provide much context in terms of all the money that goes into schools as a result of economic development, right? We just, we just sort of chalk that up to, you know, growth, and that's...
It just shows up.
Right, right, and that's, that's, that's part of, you know, you can't, you can't kind of force people to wrestle with facts, but, I mean, I think we should think about the best way to recommend something that would provide better context for all of these tools, not just TIF.
Right.
But I think all of the tools that are deployed to try to achieve something in terms of economic development here, maybe it's a separate, maybe there's like an appendix to the, to the budget that kind of tells the story in a more complete, complete way. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what the format for something like that should be, but...
Well, I think along those same lines, you take just the TIF component out, I mean, my understanding was, we have like $20 million this year, roughly, of the increment that's going to service those loans, that just intuitively, I think this, I'd be hard-pressed not to believe that the city hasn't gotten a benefit far greater than what we've given up. Obviously, MDHA had analysis that showed that you were able to change some of those assumptions in a way that muted that, or it wasn't nearly as great. I don't know, I'm, I'm not saying either one of them's right or wrong.
And then the tax rate and base is a real conversation.
Absolutely, but having somebody that could, and nobody's going to do this between now and the end of April, but somebody that can, and it's not just about return on investment, right? I mean, by statute, you're, you're, you have a different analysis, which is what is the public good that comes from this? But I think we could also show that there really is, has been a return on that investment, maybe not on each single one the way we've done it, but, but on the whole...
One of the things that Bert said last time, which resonated with me, is the, well, I had started by saying periodic reassessment of whether to keep going on districts, and you guys tweaked that periodic reassessment about what the goals are, and, and he suggested that that periodic assessment would include, by district, the successes, the remaining challenges, and proposing next steps, and so, I mean, that, that has a lot of traction with me, and, you know, that, that would presuppose that sometime in the not-too-distant future, somebody would look at the Gulch Redevelopment District, I know it has a different name, but the redevelopment district that covers the Gulch, and say, "It's 15 years old, here's what the tax base, what..." Like, you could, people could figure out how to describe the successes, but the tax base of appraised values was this in this geographic area then, and now it's this, and the difference on taxes, and describe whatever remaining challenges might be, and propose something. And I'm, I'm making up examples, but it could be that somebody looked at the Gulch and said, like, even if there's money left there, like, we're good. I know south of Broadway, there's some developers that would argue, lack of infrastructure in these three square blocks is holding back the development of these three square blocks, and then, you know, under this, you know, we would have the council and MDHA's board every X number of years deciding whether to, like, we want infrastructure in those three blocks, or we're good, no more, or whatever else. Like, that seems like, first of all, I suspect that all of us would agree to, that something like that's a pretty good idea, and we could talk about whether to do all the redevelopment districts at once or stagger them, but I think that that would, it would take a few years, but as far as determining the public good and the public benefit, you know, after you cycle through doing that for every existing redevelopment district, then, then you'd have a concrete thing of, this is how much more revenue, and you could do the math for schools, this has been the in.
Right.
You know, and it's all downtown, and schools everywhere have been getting it, and the out has been, you know, a little small portion of it. But I don't, you know, to me, that all, all of these, all the complaints that we were hearing largely get addressed by long-term systemic, strong transparency, reporting, checking in, reassessing. Now, that was a little bit of a ramble, but, I mean, that's how I see dealing with putting the, like, that education number in context. We're just not going to, like, we're not going to do it by the end of April, and it's, like, not going to happen by the end of the year. Now, what, how do you guys feel about, like, recommending to do that with the redevelopment districts over some period of time?
I think it'd be great.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd already thought about the Gulch analogy, like, I think the number, Joe, correct me, the main development in the Gulch has got maybe $16 million worth of TIF over six projects, and I don't know how many millions of dollars of tax revenue those buildings generate, but it's a lot, you know, it's a huge return on that. And I don't, I really don't think that would have happened without that seed money, you know, I mean, it was a bunch of obsolete warehouses and a X-rated bookstore and parking lots, you know.
Well, the seed money, everybody agrees on, it's the, as you get further down the road, that you get people to talk about it a little bit.
Well, and it also becomes, it's harder to analyze it and harder to tell the story when it's something like, I mean, what's the benefit of adding a park, you know, or something like that, you know, and people disagree with it.
I mean, the only thing that I know to do about that is to, facts are our friends, you know, the assessments periodically to get the facts out, and, and we could all imagine scenarios where somebody looked at the, the results and said, "That's not working," or "It's worked super," or "We got more work to do."
I won't follow up on that. So, where's the infrastructure to get that recommendation done? And how do we ensure that that's perceived as a non-biased evaluation?
Well, I mean, I've got my opinions about that. I have felt for years that economic development people in and around the city would be a lot better off if they would state things in ranges rather than absolutes.
Can I, can I throw visitors' benny in?
Yeah. My own perception around that, I'm just like, we've got to be careful about who might do something, because there will be people that...
So, you know, I mean, I've got some personal experience with this, I mean, it, yes, I mean, this is, this is, this is a good point, but it is in the realm of possibility to do solid analysis within the walls of City Hall that is defensible and fact-driven, that is possible. Now, can... Now, can, can, can you convince everybody that something you generate in-house is unbiased? No, everybody, you know, everybody's gonna, gonna always...
Particularly if it's coming out of a mayor's office.
So, maybe it's not in the mayor's office, right? But we shouldn't, we shouldn't assume that there's some huge fiscal note with this, where we have to go hire Vanderbilt to do, like, an 80-page study every time we want to make a point about this. I mean, there, it, any, anytime you're generating facts in a transparent way, it is, it is going to build trust in, in the system. I mean, that, that's, I experienced that firsthand in Austin.
Well, I'm just following up on the outline in the back. What we talked about is, when you think about, you know, who does, who does a recommendation like that get assigned to?
I mean, the other way to get trust is to have it be, you know, more than one agency working on it. I heard you.
You heard me?
I mean, I, I, I would think MDHA in planning is...
Is where that should happen.
Yeah, and I think the experience we're seeing with the CIB, how that's been changed and morphed over the last couple of years, it's, I mean, it's taken a few years, and maybe it's got a few years to go, but it, that thing's got more credibility.
I don't know how that's changed. What, what did they do?
Planning has systematically set certain metrics. Some of them have got subjectivity built in them, but they're believed to be applying the subjectivity in even...
Considerate, yeah.
And, and so, projects end up with scores along six metrics. And so, if you have the, if you propose an alien spaceport in the CIB, it's going to score poorly. If you propose straightening out an intersection that's a mess, that's going to score high. And, and that helps give at least a general understanding of what stuff seems more valuable to the city.
Another, another candidate could be Greater National Regional Council. I mean, they are very knowledgeable about all of these things. They are tied to agencies, public and, and otherwise.
Okay.
You know, they wouldn't, I don't believe they'd be perceived to have a dog in the fight on, on this stuff.
Who is that?
Greater National Regional Council, so that's a, that's a collection of cities and counties. Then, you've got these in every state, you know, some, some do metropolitan planning for transportation, others don't. But it's a, it's a multi-county body that, in their, their whole reason to exist...
Is this the groups that the transportation dollars go to, now, Kevin, now?
No, so that's, that's RTA or MTA.
This is Michael Skipper's.
This is Michael Skipper's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I, you'd have to figure out, do they have the capacity to do this? But that model works pretty well, because they are quasi-governmental but independent.
Somebody said to me yesterday, they were so forward-thinking, they had square business cards, and I was like, how does that, they're like, oh, look, here's their business card. See it's square? Like, they're, they're, they're up to date. It's like, okay.
But, you know, I mean, they do, they do...
We can even get the font changed at MDHA.
They, they do plenty of technical work over there.
People just scan.
That's, that's a good idea. I think they are viewed as neutral parties.
And maybe they convene planning and MDHA as a part of that?
Yeah, because they, they're, I mean, they would have to get information from some places. All right, so, like, we have a recommendation.
We got one.
Yippee. Well, I mean, we could, we, we just pick one out at random here, I'm about to talk about next. I'll tell you one that's, that we, we didn't really get to last time, is whether we want to recommend that districts that consider TIF parcel-by-parcel have a different planning process than ones that are TIF for the entire district. And that's going to come up, perhaps, in the transit-oriented development districts. I don't know whether the people who are, whoever's thinking about doing the next one is soured on a full district one after the last one, or not, but I, that, that's, like, one of the pieces of pending legislation would make it, if it's going to be full district, that I said finance. Well, I, I forget what I said exactly, but somebody, somebody other than MDHA alone was going to have to come up with the financial projections. I think I might have copied the transit plan legislation that their pro forma had to be signed off on by an independent accounting firm. And I, that's, that's a placeholder idea for the broader idea of, like, one of the things we've heard, like, parcel-by-parcel, it's, gee, it's making $6 in property taxes today because it's a rundown, one-story, nothing.
Totally different.
And we're going to put a giant high-rise, it's going to get more money, that's a no-brainer. But then, when you expand it to a full district, some of which is developed, some of which is not, that it's just, it's a different beast.
Brian, you may remember this, in that material that we looked at regarding kind of best practices and things like that, does it speak to that at all?
Districts versus parcel-by-parcel?
Yeah.
Not, not really. I mean, most states have, whether they call them zones or districts, or, you know, some, some states, you know, the, the, I guess customarily, the zones would be, would be a certain size versus, you know, what, what, what I think we have here. So, I, I don't think there were any specific best practices around that. I mean, I think that, for me, the question there is, you know, do you, do you treat these districts as kind of independent planning areas? And because, you know, you can look at a city as a whole and articulate some economic development goals that you might want to use TIF to help achieve, but should we think about this more in terms of kind of, you know, sub-city level districts that all have their individual needs for goals?
Every council district would have its own kind of, I just don't think that's a policy.
And then the other question about district increment versus parcel-by-parcel increment is, it kind of goes hand-in-hand, but the percent that you use for, for the increment, you know, might be different, parcel versus a district. And I, I know we heard, we've heard loud and clear from the development community that on smaller loans, if you decrease the percent of the increment you can use, you're making it perhaps unusful as a tool. And so, you know, this whole idea of how much of the increment is available, you know, seems to vary by whether it's a full district or a parcel, whether it's a big loan or a small loan, whether market conditions are strong or market conditions are weak. And I guess I'm shifting a little bit from the district versus parcel-by-parcel, but on the percentage, I thought that, I don't know, there's different ways to go about it, but I, I think that we should pick a percentage as a baseline, and that's the assumption of what it'll be going forward, whether that's, you know, 80% of the increments available, or 75, or 85, I don't know what the number is. And then, you can vary from it, you know, if there's legislation, which of course we can do any, anytime we want, but just set a, a goal that the intent is to leave some meat on the bones for Metro's basic expenses while still incentivizing development. Any thoughts about, I sort of conflated two topics, district versus parcel, and the percentage?
Yeah, I guess...
But you, you could have widely different opinions about what that percentage ought to be.
Yeah, and one concern I have about...
Let's, let's remember that, about that.
Widely different.
I think I got the votes for my bill.
And that's, that's a policy question that the council ought to answer. But I will say, I'm aware, sometimes I think we're working across purposes in here. We've talked about the fact that the equity issue, small projects are hard to do and so forth. MDHA's told us, they've kind of got in-house limits, they don't like to go below $1 million because of the cost of issuance. If you start cutting back how much of the money's available, that number goes up. And so, you'll be doing larger projects, not smaller projects.
Of course, you don't have to have the same percentage for every size project.
You don't, but...
And it's really a, a function of the amortization, right? And so, I mean, I think that, and, and you may have very well votes for it, and, you know, you all, council's got to do what the council's going to do. But I think if we start as a threshold, that this is a program that we want to keep, and that we do want to make diverse application. I mean, to your point, I think we've got to be careful about them not just cutting it back off. I mean, I guess where my thought process had evolved on this as we're here and thinking about the amortization schedules, is there not a, a recommendation to say, you know, to MDHA, we'd like to see these loan, I mean, is it that we want to see these loans paid off as soon as possible, so the full increment is returned? Or is it that Metro wants to share in some piece of that, and instead of there being $20 million, it's now $18 million, or whatever it is? And, I mean, I, I think that, that's a balance, but if we say it's a, a useful tool, and granted, you know, some, maybe there is a threshold in there, but I think it would be easier to say to MDHA, or the IDB for that matter, is, we, we think this is the range where the amortization ought to be. And given that, if you can figure out Fifth and Broad, how to shave it to 75%, then you should. But if, if it allows your amortization to go out longer, which means maybe a loan doesn't get done, and/or it's not as good of a deal for Metro, just, I think some standards in there as to how you balance it, as opposed to just setting some arbitrary number. The other thing, just since we've conflated these two, on the parcel-by-parcel versus the district, I mean, it seems like if, if the conversation here at the council and the community is evolving more towards infrastructure, that we see that as a real need in the future, if you limit it parcel-by-parcel, I think that may also limit your opportunity on, on some of the infrastructure spaces of it, as opposed to being able to think about that in a little broader context. I don't know what the right answer on that is, but I think if we are going to anticipate that there's going to be more of an emphasis on infrastructure, whether it comes from here, or whether it's, it's just where the conversation evolves as you look at each of those districts, I think we do want to balance that, too.
So, a couple of things that come to mind.
You threw a lot of us on the back, actually.
Yeah, that's fine. Both the state law and Metro law would require new districts to at least carve out debt service taxes, and so, the state's already said that, and, and we've said that. So, they're not necessarily arbitrary, you know, the question is whether there's something else that, so, so the, the city with no, no complaints from the development community, and the state, you know, certainly they're not going against the business community, has, has said, we value elevating paying debt above development. And the question is, and so, for Metro, that's like 15% right now, heading higher. And so, maybe 16% this year. The question is whether we want to, as a policy, or a standard, or a recommendation, err on the side of, listen, if, if the development incentive is going to require an amortization of, making up a number, 12 years, and that would require, you know, all of the remaining 84% of the increment, and it still doesn't work, then just don't do it. And it may, maybe it is arbitrary to do the percentage at something other than, you know, debt service taxes plus something, even if it's a little bit, but, you know, part of where we're at politically is, is dealing with the 30 years' worth of perception issues. And all our solutions on the perception issues are things that are going to take, you know, years to play out. So, I don't know.
But I do think on the perception issue, while it's going to take some years to play out, I mean, I think there are some immediate things that can be done, such as being proactive about TIF one-on-one in some of these districts, and trying to come forward with a program that makes it easier, whether it gets used or not, right? I mean, I think that will still be, but I think trying to do everything we can to show that there can be a, a more diverse application of that loan size, geographic, and otherwise, I think it's incumbent upon us to try.
So, like, even now, like, I understand that if somebody walked into MDHA to get a TIF loan, MDHA all day long could negotiate, yeah, you're only going to get to use 60% of the increment, and, like, that, that never happens, right?
Well, it did on Fifth and Broad, right? I mean, the most recent one.
And, and we have generally taken the stance that you just said, pay off the debt sooner. So, we would be, the, the dollar limit may have been reduced, so that the loan would amortize in 10 years, as opposed to our standard 15, would have worked it. Historically, that's the way we've worked that, is the dollar amount, the dollar amount does get reduced when they ask.
What percent of the increments being used for Fifth and Broadway?
75%.
That doesn't seem to be holding back that development?
And, sorry to have dropped off for that call.
We made several decisions while you were gone.
It's great.
Gave you all the...
I trust all of them.
Gave you all the homework.
We appreciate you drafting the report.
I should have made that clear before I dropped off. I don't think a one-size bucket fits all. You know, it may have been that that 75% worked at Fifth and Broad. For different ones that I've worked on, that increment actually does matter, that last 5, 10%.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is that, so, if we tried to catalog this, like, into, I don't know how we catalog it, but I got going through my head, the smaller the loan, which we need for equity diversity purposes, you need more of the increment. For, the more giant the project is, the more it seems like a candidate for using not all of the increment, generally. I would think that some of the developments we've heard about in the Gulch, where Ray Hensler got told to do a big pile of infrastructure, which is maybe more infrastructure than average, that would argue in favor of more increment than a project that came later that didn't have to do as much infrastructure. And, so, I, I guess I don't know how to capture that. Maybe, maybe you're right that there's a, like, I feel like we would have to, I feel like I'm going to get made fun of by my colleagues if I try to present something that says, we're going to ask, please, keep it as low as, you know, as, as possible, without, like, some firmer incentive.
Well, I think, I mean, I think you could, I mean, Joe just cut me off, but I mean, I think around some of the underwriting and benchmarking around amortization, except, I mean, I think you could do something that didn't just feel completely, like, pretty pleased, but that there was some, some real method.
There is, and I, and I think your, your opinion of, like, of where the committee was going, of going back and relooking at these, I think that's when you're steering it, because if we get turned loose for five years, those goals probably aren't going to change in that five years. Come back and relook at five years, and, and the board, we've tried to do this with the board, by setting those priorities. I mean, I think that's where you go in, and you set those priorities, and you say, smaller projects are still a priority, the higher ones. But when, when you had said that you want to pull those, you know, out of the Gulch, well, we still need affordable housing in the Gulch. So, while I was saying, we're never going to make another TIF loan in the Gulch, well, if someone comes in and says, I want to build another Laurel House in the Gulch, we may say, okay, and it may be worth it because of all the layers of funding. And so, those are why it's important to go back and review those goals, just as you were, as you were stating, as to what is it that we want in each of these districts? And I think that would be a great place to go and address these, that we want more revenue coming into the city in these districts and less TIF going out. Okay, that may be the time where we readjust those projects.
You've got, I mean, part of the challenge is, we've got competing policy objectives here, right? And so, I mean, the, the less flexibility we build into this by using specific thresholds... And so, I mean, the, the less flexibility we build into this by using specific thresholds, the more problem is going to be created from managing those trade-offs, right? I mean, because I could see somebody coming here and say, okay, look, every year, there will be more tax revenue coming into the city versus the project. It's always going to be 51% for the city, right? We should always be getting more. Well, okay, you could take that stance, but then how are you going to do these smaller projects and make it more inclusive? So, it's just, it's going to be really hard to maintain flexibility to allow for the inclusive nature of what we're trying to do.
And maybe, to that point, the more we do a good job of having publicly known, publicly participated in, publicly available goals and objectives, then the more likely it is that people are comfortable with using, you know, all the increment except for the debt service taxes. Maybe this issue is just another version of the, many in the general public don't trust the process or don't understand it because it's not available to be understood, and that that pushes toward, we'll use less of the increment. And maybe, maybe this, I mean, maybe, maybe it stays at the, just carve out debt service taxes, push hard on the, either the broader economic development policy, or at least certainly district by district, what the goals are in a way that people feel like they participated in the process rather than it being invisible. And with reporting, that this idea of, well, we didn't get any money out of this goes away over time.
Can I ask an accounting question? So, on the 16%, I assume because of the way these six accounts are set up, that that 16% actually does go to the debt service fund and is absolutely earmarked for.
Yes, you have to do that for.
Right, it's not debited out like the school fund.
Because you had, I mean, I recall, like, the pilot for the Omni was a partial pilot, and it was like 62% pilot, 38%, well, they were paying 38% because that was the amount that year of the budget that was actually going to schools. But my understanding always was that actually just kind of comes back into the general fund, it's not actually earmarked for schools. But was a nod, I mean, it was, in theory.
It's just general fund revenue across any of those.
But this is different, I mean, this does because of the way it comes in and gets allocated for, you can't.
Where the six funds, you know, you can see the individual pieces. He has studied that.
I know more about this than I want to.
And back on, I mean, the 16% etc., I mean, I'm not sure MDHA has a bias other than just the experience piece of it, right? I mean, we, you know, the, we're not, we're only partially incentivized to do, but we can take an admin fee on some of that, but it's not like that we feel like we're compelled to approve as much TIF as possible and that we're compelled to make sure these are always right at a 15-year amortization. We think that's the, the model that has developed over time, but I think from our standpoint, you know, we just want to know what the expectations are and we can, we can go, we can, we can work backwards to that.
One of the things that's kind of occurring to me is that if you're, however MDHA is scoring these or whoever is scoring them, the scoring might be set aside, you know, what's the?
The DBE.
DEBE component.
Participation.
What is the, you know, participation amount, how much?
Okay.
You know, I mean, you're, there becomes a whole scale of goals that we could come up with that we could give back to whoever is choosing these things that say, when you're choosing what you ought to do, you've got the goals for the region, you've got the goals for the community, you've got each of these, and so, and then you can rank them as to how they do.
This is what Brian has been saying, that the more there's goals that everybody understands and accepts, and theoretically, some, at least rough idea of how much money you're going to spend, then there's the ability to judge projects in a way that the public should embrace. And I guess I'm being persuaded that rather than focusing on that percentage, this is really about, like, DBE, equity generally, location.
Use.
The use, the, whatever, and it wouldn't be us that comes up with those, that would have to be a broader thing, but whatever those things are, then the direct directive to IDB and to MDHA is, like, really truly make decisions on projects based on how well they match up with this. And oh, by the way, as a city, this is roughly how much money, or exactly how much money we're willing to put into it.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly how economic development should work, right? I mean, there's kind of a baseline program, and then as, as you ratchet up the amount of money people are asking for, we ratchet up our expectations for what the public benefit should be. And so, as you get into higher and higher percentages, you know, you can, you can kind of work your way up that, work your way up that list.
And this is where, I'll digress briefly, I mean, this is where I, I can't help but feel like, and maybe this is an observation instead of a recommendation.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't divide them up that way.
But, I mean, I can't help but thinking, like, if, if the city said, in conjunction with MDHA, that, like, we would like to do TIF of no more than X per year, so that helps with the predictability for Talia's budget, and if, if the market wanted more than that, then we'd see this big increase of participation agreements or one of the other tools at the same time. It feels like you'd really, if you're going to do it as an economic development policy, that you'd want to capture the universe of the tools, so you didn't have just sliding out of one into another. I mean, certainly you'd want, well, the other one. Good lord.
It's getting easier, right, Bob?
Yeah, sure. What, what about the, I brought us to district versus parcels increment. I know you've mentioned it a couple of different times. Do you have, like, things you're thinking about how they should be treated differently or not?
A parcel by parcel is so much easier to define. You know how much it'll generate. You can do the math on that, everybody can, can understand that, and it's, it's pretty simple. The issue of the district, especially if it's a private developer, so, you know, you've got some of these, and by private, I mean, well, thinking of these big ones that have been done, that have been district-wide, those are really complex projects, ones that have been done in the past.
But you need to have the capacity to be able to look at a particular area or a district so you can make a conscious decision that you want to invest in that district or community, and I don't, not quite sure how to do that, but.
Since I've never seen a district-wide TIF, parcel by parcel is almost always new construction. You know, it's your, you've got a one-story rundown building, you're going to put a 20-story thing on it, and it's going to generate the same tax the 20-story building across the street generates, and it's just mad. With the district thing, and, and you calculate the increment from, from when the project gets approved, with the district things, I understand, doesn't it get calculated from when the district gets created?
Yeah. So, so.
So, that sets the floor.
So, you could do a backward-looking thing, you could say, okay, this district got created five years ago, and in those five years, the increment has increased to this amount. And then you've actually got a number that you're looking at instead of, I mean, I can estimate what adding one 20-story office buildings and add to the tax rolls, you know, with just a little bit of research, but it's very hard to predict, you know, what's going to happen to 130 acres in Donaldson over the next 10 years, you know?
Let me throw the counter side of that from a, from a planning perspective, from a budget side. If you know that you are interested in going into a particular district and you've got to put in water lines, and you, and you want to put in lights, and you want to build that infrastructure to bring other businesses along, it's better for you to be making that investment in a strategic way instead of coming in there parcel by parcel and then hooking things on as, as a particular development comes in. Because as you know, water services in particular, they've got a whole different revenue stream, a very complex capital spending process on how they allocate when, and like you said, what, what'll happen is they'll come back around through the participation agreements in order to get that infrastructure built in if it's not included on the front end.
And I think this TOD.
They will.
Yeah, this TOD thing that, you know, ended up blowing up. If that's a public policy that we're trying to implement citywide, then we need to figure out how to begin to get that to work. It's, it's just not something I know as much about. I just, there may be different rules for.
We'll use an example of River North. There's, a lot is about to happen down there, I think, okay? What should be the city's approach to addressing a multitude of probably things that are going to be happening on that side of the river?
Yeah.
How do you plan for that?
Right, and, I mean, I'm making guesses. I know it's immediately adjacent to, but not inside a redevelopment district, so one theory could have been, maybe will be, I don't know, expand that to let TIF happen. Absent that, then I assume there's a participation agreement in our future about that. And, yeah, and I guess we've talked a little bit, you know, participation agreements have, are cleaner from a property tax point of view, and there's no management fees to MDHA and property taxes in full from day one, but the city is fronting money and theoretically taking some risk. You know, the risk will be different for different sorts of projects, you know? I think anybody who wanted to say, is there really risk associated with River North or Nashville Yards, like, in this market at this time? I think, like, frankly, my, my opinion as somebody who votes on it is, like, I'd spend that out of general obligation bonds all day long and take all the property tax money from day one, because I think the risk of failure of those projects, such that there won't be an increase in property taxes, that risk is so small that I'd be happy to pay that out of general obligation debt. But, you know, there's, there's, I mean, other districts at other times, you know, when the Gulch was just starting out, apparently, you know, it maybe was the right choice to put that risk on the developer, not on, not on the city.
And if I recall, one of those loans almost went into default or did on the, on one of the early ones on the Gulch that.
It hit with the, it hit with the recession. I mean, and, and, I mean, those are the things that cannot be predicted, when there is a downturn, if there is no development. I mean, the first, first people pull out the line.
Well, and like the TIF loan on the hospital, it ended up ultimately being repaid by Bear Rollinville Hill, but, you know, for a while, it was in default.
Yeah. So, we were on the district increment is hard. But, and I guess in the context here, so, like, the idea with Donaldson, if, if, if you're the king of the city and you're deciding, city spends general obligation bond debt to do the needed infrastructure versus a district where there's going to be TIF, you know, the judgment is, you'd rather the city not front the money, you know, I mean, reasonable people could disagree about this, but, but that's, I mean, that's fundamentally, when you're deciding to put a TIF district in place, setting aside the design stuff, which isn't nothing, but setting aside the design stuff, is, is the city willing to front the GO bond debt versus get it out of property taxes over time?
Correct.
Somebody with an MBA could actually figure that out, right?
Well, the piece that you don't know, so the math, for that part of it is easy to do. The question is, you know, what's the value in, you know, what's the incremental value that makes it pay to, to take that risk?
What is your confidence interval?
Yeah, I mean, the, the risk is really that it, that it doesn't do well, because if the, if the area overperforms, then it's just the difference of interest on GO bond debt versus paying MDHA a fee and waiting for the taxes to come in. But it's if the project underperforms, then all of a sudden, you're taking, you know, if, if you had a crystal ball and you knew a project was going to underperform, and you're the city, you would do a TIF every time.
Hopefully, we wouldn't do those. I think we've got a decent track record.
Or if you were limited in your TO capacity for some reason.
Politics of debt, incurring debt.
Well, I also wonder, I mean, we, we are combining the two notions of return on investment and risks and looking at this like we would if we're an investment banker or investor versus, I mean, there, there are some things that need to be, need to get done for the public good, right? I mean, that's what the real statute says, I mean, and I don't know if that changes those.
Yeah, although, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, I, it doesn't do many, like, it's sort of deeply ironic that the statute then requires transit blight, basically, and the first one you pick is where the most transit is in the county.
It's degrees of blight.
I mean, it's an awkward, it's an awkward, especially the transit-oriented development, like, the regular redevelopment districts, you can observe blight or not, but the idea that you're supposed to go to transit deficit areas and then we picked where the train line was to start, like, like, I get it.
Relative.
I get it, but it's, it makes it hard to, when you're, well, it makes it hard.
I guess the analysis has to be, there could be a lot more.
Right, if only that weren't the state law. Well, so, we're, and trying to move this forward, it's hard, the only way, like, getting through, so, the, the hard part is analyzing whether, what the public benefit is from doing it as TIF as opposed to something else. I mean, that fundamentally describes whether there should be a district there or not, and where the city is at right now is, that's MDHA's job entirely, which I think admittedly had never been done before in the city, you know, would, do we want to recommend, do we want no recommendation, do we want to recommend, we need to figure out a new way to figure out the hard thing, do we want to recommend a specific path to figuring it out? I'm of the mindset that more heads are, you know, better. I don't know whether that means more heads in Metro or more heads in Metro plus somebody outside.
You're talking about whether a new district should be created, that's the topic.
Yeah, right, just the, the, right.
The transit-oriented district.
Yes.
I mean, for sure, that has to be approved by the council, right?
Yeah.
Maybe we have an observation around that, that we prefer parcel by parcel, we think parcel by parcel is a more manageable, more appropriate, although there should be some, although there could be an instance, TOD, et cetera, where a district is appropriate, but obviously it's going to be subject to council approval.
I get, and, I mean, if you guys think it would be okay, I mean, my observation for that is, there needs to be some more meat to the methodology of the proposal. Well, again, I don't want to re-litigate it, but the financial projections, I think could be different, better, less guesswork. And I don't, and I think there should, there should be some process that at least includes other metro departments or an outside person to figure out if we're going to try to figure out the hard. to figure out if we're going to try to figure out the hard part about what is this district going to be doing tax-wise.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. I'm kind of trying to figure out how to do one in my head.
That's right.
So, what are we saying? I mean, are we saying we are going to have a bias toward parcel by parcel with leaving open the possibility of corridor level TIF with better analysis? Is that, is that what we're saying?
I don't know about a preference because, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed on principle to district for transit stuff. I think districts for transit stuff is what other cities have done most frequently. I think other cities are.
You just want a better financial analysis. I think that's all you're asking.
Maybe it's.
And I know there's other cities that have, on districts, set up, leave out, don't use all the increment.
I think maybe that's kind of criteria that we were talking about earlier, maybe good to talk about when it comes to districts, in terms of financial projections, in terms of percentage of the participation is the purpose. And, I mean, just, I think the next one that comes through, we got to set kind of a standard of things we would recommend that be reviewed or delivered to MDHA as a part of that.
Perhaps that analysis drives whether or not it's parcel by parcel or by district.
One nice way about how the other states treat districts, especially with transportation, you know, is you build in a planning mechanism for designing the corridor. It's not just about the financial projections of the revenue and the share and all of that. It's, once we've decided that we're going to do high-capacity transit down a corridor, you can, as part of the TIF process, go through a set of guidelines for what, for what planning should look like there, which is where we got a little sideway in Donaldson here. But that's, that's a, that's a feature, that's not a bug.
Let me ask you a question. So, who's the sponsor of the district?
So, well, so in Texas, for most of the, for most of these types of TIFs, you would have an independent board. A board would be created that would then govern the district.
So, to me, this is government per se that is driving the district, mage in the district, setting the expectations on the district. And they are the ones that are doing either public infrastructure as a part of that, or something that's public related to it, land acquisition, whatever. It's not a private developer that's walking in saying, hey, I've got a great idea about doing a transit oriented development.
How is the CIB money allocated? Is council did that, or is there?
Which one is that, CIB?
Should be improved, just the CIB.
So, the CIB capital improvements budget is essentially a wish list of projects. And so there's, I think, a gazillion dollars worth of projects. I think I'm close on the CIB. And then there's a.
They're not doing their job if it's not a gazillion.
Right. And then there's a annual, usually, capital spending plan that the mayor's office in combination with finance will figure out what the amount of the spend is. And then, and then the mayor's office in conjunction with department heads and others figure out how to divvy up the money that is deemed available to be in the capital spending plan. And then it goes to the legislative branch to.
Debate.
Debate. And.
Is that part of the annual capital improvements bill?
So, we, that's been, that doesn't have a consistent year in, year in process. I think we're on a cycle right now where the capital spending plan dollars are in legislation in the fall, whereas the budget, operating budget is, you know, May, June. It's, you know, it's a, it's own mini circus, the capital spending plan. And usually, usually meaning the last three years, when I've been sitting there, it's, the lion's share of the capital spending plan happens as proposed. And there's some things that get moved around a little bit. The last year, the Dean administration, there were multiple material projects that didn't get approved in it. And so.
But, back to these transit oriented things, if it's the government that's doing it, I think that that, you know, you've got a lot more control on that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think, I think one of the things that happened last time, and somebody might correct me because I was just watching from my chair in the council chamber, I think the executive branch said in furtherance of policy for density, we're going to do one of these, and Donaldson's the place. And from there, almost all or all the financial analysis about how much that would generate in increment happened at MDHA. And finance wasn't involved in it at all. And, and so, at least the observation from the council chair was administration-led policy decide on Donaldson, MDHA crunches numbers, proposes an amount of increment that that's going to be. And then, the, back in the executive branch, that's some idea of the pace of which projects could happen based on the amount of increment that was suggested by their number crunching. And so, from a city point of view, you really want to know that, and, like, this is a thing that it's hard and it's never been done before. And so, probably whatever got proposed would have been criticized. But you really want to know that you've got your hands around at least something in the vicinity of what's the increment that's going to be created and how much is going to be left for metro. Because especially at 130 acres, I think most everybody would agree, you don't want to freeze revenue from 130 acres on a 30-year time horizon. There's going to be some splitting of investment dollars versus keep the, you know, everything else going.
That's helpful.
And figuring out that number crunching to show some, at least, representation of how much is available to be invested and how much is available to, you know, have everything else run. That, that's the piece that, at the end of the day, I think that was the thing that made the vote not come together.
Let me ask you another question. So, we've got issues around the ball field. There's some other big, big, big TIFs out there. What's the, is there any thought or conversation around those as we're talking about tax increment financing?
What do you mean? Talk about it?
Well, to me, we've talked a lot about specific project TIF, goals, issues, transparency, you know, just, everybody, everybody can, we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to get that done.
I mean, are you thinking that those are perhaps case studies of how to do it or how not to do it?
I think there's some context I can offer. Part of what we did in the 2016 legislation that, that was frankly, rich rebelling suggestion, was the idea of making it so, on the parcel by parcel TIFs, once the initial loan was paid off, that the increment would then revert to metro. And prior to the 2016 law that we passed, that wasn't the case. And so, when the first loan got burned off, the increment was still being collected and.
Used.
There was sort of a stockpile of available increment. And I think, I don't think this is any big secret. I think, I think the administration through the dean years was interested in putting that increment that was still being collected after an initial loan was paid to use. And, and some of those parcels where the initial loan had burned off, but the increment was still being over at MDHA, those are the ones that got used up to finance the baseball stadium. And now that those, that increment for initially burned off loans is been tasked, and there's the 2016 law that makes it after an initial loan burns off, it goes off, it goes back to the general fund, that dynamic doesn't really exist anymore. So, there's not really a method easily right now to get increment from a series of properties to put into a new project. I don't, I don't think that's a tool that's available.
There's that part that everybody thought was.
Did I get?
You got all that right.
Okay.
So. So, like, they finance the convention center grabbing an increment?
Not, not the convention, the Country Music Hall of Fame expansion.
Yes.
Well, I'm thinking of the sales tax.
Oh.
We're doing TDZ, that's different.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a different mechanism.
It's a different meaning.
That's a whole different thing.
Well, and that's, that mechanism is convention center specific.
Yeah.
But on the, on the Country Music Hall of Fame expansion, I mean, it was metal. The ballpark was the example for how that would, the Country Hall of Fame expansion would be first. And MDHA aggregated several of those, like, Bells Out Tower and some other things, I think, that had been used increment to go down.
But there's, there aren't, that, that, that method of grabbing different parcels increments where the initial loans are gone, that's not a thing that's doable right now.
It's a shame.
Well, but that's kind of what happens with this TOD thing, if you go district by it, and it's not.
Depends on your perspective, doesn't it?
It's not a lot.
It's the same concept, right?
Yeah.
TOD, right?
Yeah, right.
A little more defined, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Goodness gracious.
But that's helpful.
Yeah, thank, good. Let's, since we're getting, it's already 2:30, we got to talk about logistics and getting to the finish line, both in terms of meeting, doing work, and who's going to write stuff. And so, that's maybe the hardest topic that we've got.
Maybe that's why we keep ignoring it.
I know, right. So, on writing stuff, especially background, what is TIF, that kind of thing, you know, we've got, we, I've got two options in the first. One is find somebody in the mayor's office or finance who's got extra time on their hands to.
What's the second option?
Second option is Mr. Ed Branding, who's sitting right here, has volunteered his time. And he's been a reporter in his past. And it would be purely volunteering out of the goodness of his heart to participate. Those are, or, and I guess the third option is we individually find extra time to do it.
Are you still thinking, you had mentioned that human relations document that might, that kind of format, instead of using lots and lots of words, more infographics and things like that? Is that still an option?
I don't want, I don't want to complicate this, but what is, what?
Great purpose.
You can have.
What kind of level of effort are we talking here on background versus looking ahead? Like, what is the distribution of effort here? Because, I mean, we, at the point you made at the hearing was a good one. I mean, we've compiled a lot of background. And, I mean, I guess we could summarize it, and that would be helpful context for recommendations. But how much of this do we really need?
Well, tell you this question first. Like, I think the only thing, we're not going to be able to use that sort of format for like a whole report. But I think one of the things we didn't get to today because it's very low hanging fruit. But, like, one of the recommendations I'm sure we're going to have is that something like Metro Human Relations product on affordable housing should be put together with TIF to show the, like, the how it works. And then we'd have that for the rest of time, and it would be great. Like, I don't think we're going to put that together, but that's going to be a recommendation. But I don't think that solves our report issue.
It'd be nice if somebody had just a base draft. And, and then maybe we could all take a section and be responsible for just editing that, beefing it up, commenting on it. And everybody would have the opportunity to comment on everything, but then everybody could own one section.
Well, so, this is your point. If we, if we did it ourselves, the seven of us, we would, I think, have to decide that the background stuff is lots of references to the document library because we have to put our energy into the recommendations. Because I'm not, I don't know about you guys, but I'm not interested in coming up with a wonderful, like, education piece about what is TIF and then shortchange the recommendations part. If we do it ourselves, I think that has to be the case. What I talked for five minutes with Mr. Branding about is if he was volunteering at our direction to work on the background, what is TIF, how is TIF used, where are the projects, then that would free us up to focus on the, the recommendations. And I think we could probably do what Charles Roberts suggested. And I don't know, I don't know if we want to have to synthesize seven voices, but if three or four of us took parts of it, and we, I mean, everybody's welcome to do it. But if we split it up between three, four, or seven of us for different recommendations or observations, you know, that would theoretically get people's word product down to a couple pages, a handful of pages each.
You were thinking bullets as well, right? Lots of paragraphs.
I know financial people thinking bullet points and no bounds.
I mean, you've got to have some narrative in there.
Right.
To provide.
I would find a simple initial draft report to be a better structure. I mean, it was helpful that I had this discussion, but we'll never get to the end zone doing it like this.
Another question that I've got in terms of some of these recommendations that we're making around education, transparency, you know, the piece about, those are going to be tasked to whom if we make that recommendation relate to MDHA? Is it to?
There's a little task.
You know, between the last meeting and sit through Wednesday and today, I'm thinking that we should, I think, I think we need to focus on the ideas and then maybe fill in the who at the, at the end.
I think Paul, over here, should say, but I want to be very specific that there's like, like, somebody that it's assigned to and a time they're going to deliver.
I think it's, and I would totally agree. I just don't know, like, if, after we've got, like, I think, two pretty good recommendations and an observation today, if we start dipping it up, like, we might decide at the end that it's a different allocation depending on the rest of what we come up with. Because we couldn't just, like, write planning for everything or MDHA for everything, I don't think.
So, here's an example of sort of what I'm talking about. So, in Paul's outline here, where are TIF projects located? I mean, we, all that information's already available. Somebody could summarize it and try to put it in a different format. But I would rather see us make a recommendation saying, you know, look, we have all these great interactive mapping tools now. Let's, let's build ITS, build an interactive map showing all of the TIF projects with key information around them, period. And then that way, we're not trying to write a 20-page summary of where everything is and going through history of.
It'll be updated.
Projects, right.
Something like the zoning thing where you pull up a particular thing and it says it's on this and.
What do, what do you think about having a facilitated session with this team where we could walk through these topics and prioritize and plot and walk out of the room with a finished kind of outline?
I'm pro of that.
If we could find somebody that were available.
Amen.
To do that, that could just.
Yeah, if there's one thing that's clear.
Lock us in a room for two hours and say, you're not leaving until you.
If there's one thing that's clear from the last two meetings, like, that's not me.
I'm just thinking, you know, that brings an accountability to us for us.
But do we need to do something to give to that person to start with?
Yes, yes.
I mean, this isn't far off.
It's not.
Yeah. The person, I mean, so, who comes, I mean, we either need like the Babe Ruth of facilitators or somebody who's.
Available.
Pretty good and, but knows the subject matter. Like, I don't.
I'm just trying to think of a, you know, as a skilled facilitator, sometimes. I'm just trying to think of a, you know, because a skilled facilitator sometimes doesn't need to actually know the subject matter, they, their job is just to keep the group on task.
So what would, what would the outcome of that session be?
We would come out with an outline for a structure with specific recommendations. You know, because we've talked a lot, I really think if someone had been in the room and helped us gather our thoughts, they probably could have been putting those in buckets for us today.
Well, and the reality is, I mean, my, my intention between, from last meeting was to have something different. Like, I wanted to have something more specific than this for today.
That's just the idea.
I just went through a planning process for Think Tennessee that Liz Fay ran.
Liz Fay is terrific.
And so she interviewed X number of people beforehand, got in a room with us for a meeting, worked us through a process.
Well, you walked out to her door.
And, and then we walked out, she wrote it up, and you had a, at least an outline-
And a framework.
Right.
We've used her before, too.
I assume there's a price tag associated with that?
Yeah. But she's not terribly expensive.
MDHA reminds us that they've got a lot of money, but it looks like it helps with expensive.
I was drawing that off.
So you're going to write it off?
Depends on what the percentage is. Yeah, I think, I, I-
You're talking about Liz and Talia.
MDHA would, could absolutely pay for that.
She's very good.
But I assume that's a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, depends on how much time we need, but.
Well, that's one of those sessions that I did, it was like a half a day, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like-
Well, we have, it has to be structured at the beginning.
It's got, I mean, it's probably more than our usual two hours, right, to get through it all.
To get through it all?
Yeah.
A half, a half a day to be through it? Not that I'm not loving this, but-
If we could, that'd be worth it, right?
You know?
Yeah, that's a fair point. Well, I don't, I don't know Liz Fay, but two of you guys think she's awesome. Somebody in the audience doesn't.
She's not making any decisions, she's just taking us through a process.
I've been, I've attended quite a few of hers, I'm very familiar with her. Thank you very much.
With, with whom does she work?
She has her own consulting phone, blessed, I heard.
Um, does, I mean, anybody else have other ideas? I, I mean, so-
Right, a facilitator.
Yeah.
I'm sure there are lots of them in this city.
Here's my view, we're supposed to be done by the end of April, and we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good in this process. We've covered a ton of ground, we're going to have a good report. I do agree that a facilitator-
And as he said, maybe she does interviews before we get in there or something.
I think she has to do that.
Right. Or whomever we choose. Do you guys have anybody at MDHA that you have used before?
Well, I know Kia-
Actually, you used her.
So Kia-
We've used her before, too.
Kia just came in to facilitate the discussion about the Moore's Memorial Building. She might, if you want a couple options.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if you, I don't know who, but I think we could do, we could probably, if we did that and had a half-day, we could probably be useful for the group.
So, how do we, how do we move forward on that idea? Obviously, we can't pick it.
Is MDHA willing to handle that?
We can, we can procure-
Okay, that's what I'm just, is that an option? I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we, we can procure them under our procurement rules if there's someone you want to go after that, that we can, we can issue an IPO and get them started.
Would you guys consider just for the, not just optics, but the substance of it, have the scope be making sure that she understands she's not working for MDHA?
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think it'd be for the committee, we're, but I mean, obviously it's someone's got to pay for it, so I will contract with her, but I'm glad.
Just be cognizant when you're, when you're doing the procurement, that, like, it is more than just the optics, that, but when somebody does a public records request for that, that she's, she's contractually obligated to be-
Well, I would, I would further the recommendation coming from you as to who did, who it is that you want, and then-
And let us just pay for them.
Yeah, and we'll just, we'll just pay for them.
Well-
I mean, if it comes from the committee, then from the committee, we're just two-
You could also say that you should get quotes from a-
Well, I mean, I think this is going to be relatively short-term, like, you know, a half a day's work of interviews with people, and then a half day's work and then a half day's-
Watch the videos.
... writing a report. That's not going to, that's not going to break those thresholds. If there, if there is an individual, if there's not, or if you've got two or three individuals, we'll give prices with yours.
But you guys have contracted with this person before?
No, we're not using that one.
Do you have contracted with her before?
We have.
Okay. If she's available, or she may not be available, we may be able to find someone that's willing to come in and not charge a fee.
Would, would the-
We have a subcommittee of-
Would the-
Brian, Talia, Joe?
Would the, would the committee entertain the idea of authorizing me to take the two ideas that have come up today and work with MDHA?
Yes.
So moved.
Yes.
Any discussion about that?
MDHA, work with Joe.
Joe.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Enough sent you your contact info.
Oh, okay, excellent. And then, so for, so, so we're gonna do no written work product before we have that session, is what I'm hearing?
I think assuming we could do it in relatively, you know, I think assuming that can start this month, I mean, if we could, if we could get the session done before the end of the month, and then we still have a full 30 days out there.
If she's going to interview, so, I mean, the, the one homework we could do is, and I guess most of them have already done this, I mean, have you, is this, is this outline the product of people jotting down ideas here and there for what recommendations they would like to focus on, I mean, going in here?
This is me keeping a running list from all our conversations at all our meetings, trying to apply a little bit of organization, adding in thoughts from the last meeting and from the public here. And so it's, it's, nobody has provided any feedback on it, but it is my attempt to capture everything.
So feedback on this would be helpful for the group.
Yeah. So, so, so let's say that today is the 8th, if you guys could each give me feedback by the end of next week-
Yeah, that's good.
On it, and, and in our continuing effort to be transparent, I'm going to take everybody's feedback and dump it online, and therefore we're not having any out-of-school conversations. And I'll work-
It's helpful to know.
Yes. Right, so no comments about me in the feedback, and you guys have given me authority to work with MDHA to explore the couple of people and, and make sure the procurement happens. And then for scheduling the next meeting, how about we do this? I'll figure out when we could have the facilitated session. Might have to do somewhere else with a whiteboard, I don't know. So location and date is up in the air. If it looks like we're not going to be able to do that till well into April, then I'm probably going to try to get another meeting among us before that.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm learning a lot.
I'll be happy to volunteer conference room in the office, you know, place up whiteboards, stuff like that.
Yeah, we're, we're going to still have to make it so these guys can come and the public can show up. You guys are okay with the public in your office?
Yeah, we are.
All right, unless there's anything else, we'll be adjourned.
Friday afternoon.
All right, thanks a lot, guys.
Still raining.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.